I would like to call the special meeting of the city council to order, please. Deputy City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Martin is absent. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Zamora?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rounds?
Here.
And Mayor Sarno?
Here.
Public comments are now open. The public may address the city council on any matter on the agenda only. For those that are here for a public comment, you will have an opportunity, once the deputy city clerk announces your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody wishing to speak?
No one is wishing to speak, mayor.
I will now close public comments. Close session, close session. Item number one through three, I would like to call upon the city attorney to read the closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Item number one is conference with labor negotiators. Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representative, city manager, employee organizations, Santa Fe Springs City Employees Association, Santa Fe Springs Firefighters Association, Santa Fe Springs Management and Confidential Employees Association, and Santa Fe Springs Executive Management Association. Item two is conference with real property negotiators. Government Code Section 54956.8. Properties are access parcel number 77679-01-01, 77680-01-01, 77681-01-01, 77682-01-01, 79985-01-01, Are there any bidders? Agency negotiator, city manager, negotiating party, Caltrans. Under negotiation, price and terms. And finally, item number three is conference with real property negotiators. Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is 11760 Telegraph Road in Santa Fe Springs. The agency negotiator is the city manager. Negotiating party is the United States Postal Service. Under negotiation, price and terms.
Well, I'm glad you said all that, because I didn't want to. We will now recess to close session. We will reconvene the meeting after the close session discussion to hear the reports of the city attorney and adjourn the meeting. Close session.
We're going in there?
I miss like every time I should I have to.
You.
Let me get, let me get in the general before I want to.
Yes, go ahead.
Good.
Yeah, podium? Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah. I don't even get so far. Cause you're like right in front of the director. I thought it was back here for the.
I remember. You know, what is it? You don't have to talk. Having. Knowing. Talking. There's a. I remember being real close, but if you might have been. Said it was too. Or. I think the lines. Can't. Ask. They're different. It's okay. By. You know, but you tell me. I don't. Or. Or. I don't. I don't. I don't. Well, you. I know. Counselor. Show. It's not. He said, no. Just. Here. No, I'm. Who wants this? Am I seeing her by you guys?
No.
There, I'll move over to. Hey. They want you over here.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. I know. What can I say? So. Are we? Have you been? Yeah.
I'm challenging. All the pressure. I have. I'm. Yeah. So. Um. My friend. She's. I wish. I called the last. Uh. Flowers. Yeah. Oh, yeah. You have to be here. Okay. Yeah. I mean, I. I don't. I see. I'm. There. I've been. When I. Well, wait. Oh. Inside. I was. Here. I know. We're. Hmm. Okay. Um. Oh. Don't show us. She. She had a. She had. The. She was supposed to play. On this. That would be crazy. I don't know. But I told them. Um. Yes. Yes. Yeah. She made it. I get it. Like. Three days. How he was even. Yeah. Right? I love you. Yeah. That would be. Six. Yeah. Yeah, no, I didn't. Yeah. I tell me.
I did. Too. Uh. Uh. Should I take something? Yes. Uh. I don't know. And I remember. That. Wanted to do it all. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I'll show you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. I tried. That's. Oh. I'll be. About. About. Seems like. Yeah. It's.
I don't know.
Yeah. Every one of you. Wednesday. Like. Before your work. Yeah. 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 Some. Again. I'm. That's always. I'm. I would.
There you go. I don't know why. But. I don't. I don't. Yeah.
To go. Yeah. You. So. They should. Do. Yeah. Yeah. So. And. Yes. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Let me go get my glasses. I'm sorry, ma'am.
You want bills? You can move. Yeah. I would like to reconvene the meeting. The city attorney, is there a closed session report?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Counsel. Members of the audience, we did have a five o'clock closed session. Direction was given to staff and no reportable action was taken.
Yeah, I'd like to close the meeting. Now, I'd like to open up the call into regular meeting to the Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successors, Successor Agency, and City Council order, please. Deputy City Clerk is. Roll call.
Councilmember Martin is absent. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Zamora?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Rounds?
Here.
And Mayor Sarno?
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive one hundred and fifty dollars for their attendance at these meetings.
I would like to call upon Ms. Jarvis to lead us in today's invocation. Please rise.
A sweet friendship refreshes the soul. Proverbs twenty-seven, nine. A true friend is to be trusted and valued. Have you ever had a friend who's been with you through all seasons of life? Friendship is sometimes challenging, yet so rewarding. God tells us, "A friend be a friend to the friendless that gives hope and belonging, thus allowing a sense of community." What we have here in Santa Fe Springs. So next time you see a stranger, say hello and be a friend in that moment. You might just make their day. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we give you honor for all you've done in our community and will still do. We ask for your favor for our city, that we may continue to exemplify values, humility, and strength. I pray over each of our council members by name. Jay, Annette, Bill, Juanita, Joe Angel. May you cover them with your mighty hand as they lead. We give you thanks for all you have done. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I would like to call upon the youth leadership to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Come in. I would like to call upon Joe Angels Zamora. Lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Please place a flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Could you sit? Joe Angel, can you tell everybody what you do?
What's.
Favorite color? And, yeah, what school you gonna do? Introductions. I would like to introduce the following representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. Bruce Lazenby, Rose Hills Memorial and Santa Fe Springs Chamber President, please. Thank you. Next, presentations. Uh. Items one through four. Advisory Committee Report, Historical Community Preservation. I would like to call upon the Historical Community Preservation Chair, Sally Gaetan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Um, my name is Sally Gaetan and I am currently the chairperson for the Historical and Community Preservation Advisory Committee. Our first meeting of the year, we were giving out the awards for the Holiday Home Decor Contest. And at that time, we were currently discussing some of the changes that we're going to be making this year for the rules of that contest. Our next meeting, we were in discussion of the lantern tour. Um, hopefully, everybody knows about our lantern tour. We had four hundred and one visitors to come out to that small little activity that we had. And I want to thank Mr. Rounds and his family and our city manager for coming out and joining us as well and experiencing that, um, activity that we had out there. Uh, right now, we are also in discussions about changing possibly the date on that as well. I know we have some other things going on within the city that may conflict with that timing, so we're in discussion about maybe changing it. And the individual that actually helps to lead that fell ill, and so we may not be able to even have him come out and help us. So right now, we're pending of that activity, you know, this year or not. And then, last of all, our committee has been in discussion to turn the Carriage Barn into a museum. We've always been looking to do something greater for Heritage Park, and it was thought that possibly the Carriage Barn would be a good investment. So we had some people come out. Um, what was her name? Paula? Paula Henham. And she's an advisor for, um, I guess it's like a organization that does museums. And so she came out, took a tour, and she said that that was a very good possibility to turn that, um, Carriage Barn into a valuable asset to the city. So at the time, um, she suggested that we create a mission statement, which was done by the committee, and then it was presented to council and council approved that. So the second part of that would be to now, we're in discussion of creating a strategic plan, and that is part of the requirements for turning the Carriage Barn into a museum. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for your report.
Okay. Renee, uh, if we can, just to make sure that we do a thorough, uh, on the, on the building itself before we start, just to make sure that, you know, there's no holdups later on.
Will do. And, um, just want to announce that today, our wifi went live at Heritage Park. Um, it's live on the south side. It's a pilot program. So, uh, if you go and walk around the park, there's live wifi and the, um, there's cameras there now, so, uh, we're testing it out. Our goal is to grow it across the park and then include it in other parks. So if you happen to be at Heritage Park, check out the wifi.
Smart Park. Next, the Best of Santa Fe Springs, recognizing Gloria Magame for exceptional community services. I would like to call upon Public Information Officer, Raylene Boraza. You guys want to stand up?
Good evening, Mayor Sarno and members of the city council. It is my honor to stand before you this evening to recognize our Best of SFS honoree Gloria Magame for her exceptional community service to the city of Santa Fe Springs. In our city, there are individuals who stand out for their exceptional commitment to service, and this evening, we celebrate this remarkable resident. Gloria has been a resident of the city of Santa Fe Springs for over forty years. This city is where she and her husband of forty-five years raise their family and call home. For more than fifteen years, Gloria has been an active volunteer in the city's Santa Float Program. She is a member of two city advisory committees, the Heritage Arts Advisory Committee and Beautification Committee. Gloria is also a member of the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club, where. Where she actively assists with obtaining scholarships for high school seniors that reside in the city of Santa Fe Springs. But what truly sets Gloria apart is not just by her acts of volunteerism, but the genuine care and empathy she brings to everything she does. Whether it is giving a hundred and ten percent to any task that is asked of her, to lending an ear to those in need, or offering words of encouragement, she embodies the very best of what it means to be a great neighbor and friend. So please join me in extending a heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to Gloria Magame for her outstanding dedication to community service in the city of Santa Fe Springs.
Stay up here, you guys, take a picture. Stay here, stay here, stay here. We'll move on. Does your wife know you gave flowers to her?
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Thank you. Yeah. Do the women's club want to come up and take a picture with her?
Come on, ladies.
Your son doesn't want you to be right there by him.
I need one more person over here. Peggy.
Peggy.
Do you guys want to say, say something?
Go ahead, yeah.
Wait, Francis is our president. Maybe she should say something. She wouldn't want to upset you. Ladies, can we get your attention? Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to say that being a friend to Gloria Magame is so special, and I'm in the women's club with her. She does practically everything that you ask. The presentation by Raylene was accurate. Anything that you ask of her, she does, and she doesn't, she just does it. She doesn't ask questions. She doesn't get mad. She just gets out there and does it. And we are very proud of our women's club, and we are very proud of Gloria for getting this award tonight. And if any of you ladies would like to say something, now's the time to say something about Gloria. So, Francis, you want to say something?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Gloria, we love you. Congratulations, and it's well deserved. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Francis Carbahal. I'm the president of the women's club. It was my honor to nominate Gloria. Why? Because she's the epitome of volunteer. Whenever we call upon her, it's 110%. She just gives her all. She's always smiling. She always helps other committees, too. That's what makes it key. And I've been her friend for over 20-plus years, her and Sasa, and it was just an honor, and I just, I care for you so much. You do everything with a smile, and you talk things through, but you do everything 110%, and I'm thankful for you.
I didn't do it. She raised her hand. She wants to speak. What can we say? No? You're welcome. Yeah. Yeah, this déjà vu.
I'd just like to say that Mr. Armandares is here representing Maria Elena López Boca was the one that, and a group of ladies, we nominated Gloria because that's what Gloria is all about. You tell her, "We need you here, we need you there," there she is. And boy, we really enjoy her because she's a party animal lady.
Yes, ma'am.
This woman, no matter where she's at, whether it's the Santa Flop, a committee meeting, you know, you can't help but smile back at her because she always has a big smile on her face. And you know what? You well deserve this award and recognition, and just keep doing what you're doing because you're doing a fantastic job, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Wait. Hilda, is it okay for him to speak? Is it okay?
Oh, man. Also, you know, we talk about Gloria, but I want to first talk about Sam also, her husband. And, you know, the fact of them being together, he's waving in the bag. Yeah, you know, it's the fact of the partnership. You know, I know that Jesus said to go out there and be twos and, you know, and hit the partner that Gloria has, and them being that partnership, it's, they're great servants in our community. And I want to thank, you know, Sam and of course Gloria, all that you do. You guys are always happy-go-lucky, always in a positive mood, and it helps everybody else out around you because you have all this darkness in this world, but yet you guys shine light. And I just can't thank you enough for just being that lamplight here in our community, continue to be a bright star here in our community. And, you know, we love you. If it comes to dancing, you ever want a dancing partner? Gloria's your person. She's not going to get tired, though, so, you know, good luck. But thank you, everybody else, for being here and also being great volunteers. So, take care and God bless.
Gloria, I think the title speaks for itself, and as you can see from everybody around you and from up here, we all appreciate everything you've done for us as a community, but what you do as a community member and a resident. So, I say thank you for your service and thank you for everything you've done. And like we said, every time we see you, you always have a smile on your face. It doesn't, it doesn't help. And that's probably with a happy marriage, so I congratulate you. So, thank you for everything you do. Next, we're going to do recap Easter extravaganza and recognition of sponsors and supporters. I would like to call upon the Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Gus Hernandez.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sarno and members of the city council. Gives you great pleasure to report that our Easter extravaganza event was held on Saturday, March 30th. Due to rain, we had to pivot to the Activity Center, but our community proved resilient, and we had close to 1,500 people come out for that event. And so, we still had some face painters out there. We were able to do pictures with the bunny. And then, thanks to our supporters, we had Easter baskets that we gave out to over 150 kids. And we'll do a recognition after this recap video, but I just want to say thank you to the city council, thank you to the community for coming out for this event. I also just want to thank our staff, Parks and Recreation and Public Works, for being able to transition so quickly. You know, we saw forecasts of inclement weather early in the week, and they quickly got that facility ready to go for those 1,500 people. But at this time, I do want to recognize some special groups here today that helped us put this event on, and without their support, or I think their support really added to this magical event. And so, first up, I'd like to recognize the American Legion Rivera Post 411, who collaborated also with the Majestics Car Club, here represented by President Ernie Lopez and members of the Majestics Car Club. We also have the Undesirables Car Club, represented by the President, Mr. A.J. Hayes. And then, our Sister Cities was out there in the rain cooking pancakes for everybody. I think they made over 800 pancakes, if I'm not mistaken. But we have our Sister City organization as well here, represented by their chairperson, Ms. Francis Carbahal, and members of their committee as well. So, I'd like to invite them up for recognition of a certificate and a picture with our city council.
Are we going to do one group at a time?
Sure.
Okay. What do you want to do first?
Have a...
You...
Yep, let's have the Majestics Car Club come up first, since they're first here in the... Unfortunately, representative from American Legion Rivera Post 411 was not able to make it with us tonight, but they're working closely with the Majestics Car Club.
Got to say cheese.
All right, three, two, one. Two, three, two, one.
Thank you guys very much. And that young fellow you see there, that was Batman in the picture there. Thank you. All right, next up, if we can have Mr. A.J. Hayes and the Undesirables Car Club come up.
I would just like to say a couple of words, Mayor Sarno and to the city council. Thank you first to God, who gave us the ability and the collaboration to come together and bring this event, and with the city's cooperation. And a big thank you to Renee, the city manager. It should be noted, Mr. Mayor, to his file with HR that he did a good deed for the city. And, you know, growing up in city parks, as I did, and some of you guys on city council, to residents and to the kids, this is the last resort sometimes for parents to go out that don't have enough, that don't have a lot. And we are grateful to work together with the Majestics, come together and provide over 150 baskets here to the city. But because you allowed it to happen, we are appreciative, you know, for you and working together. Our car culture community is about family, and I always say spreading unity in the community with our classic cars. That's the way we go. That's what we do. So, it should be noted, Mr. Mayor Sarno, to his credit and to his file, a big thank you. And to all the city staff that worked also that day who came in and accommodated us, a big thank you, too. Gus, your staff was amazing. The way you pulled it off. Our line was for three hours out the door in the rain for these baskets. So, it shows to go that people still have a need, and because of the events you guys sponsors and put on, that's why the residents come. Some people can't afford a basket, and they're there for that reason. So, thank you, city council. Thank you to the city manager, and thank you to the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I'd like to bring up the Sister Cities that are here by Chairperson Francis Carbahal.
John. Come on, John. Come on. I seen you in the picture baking or flipping pancakes. You were part of those 800 pancakes that got... Call us Nicky and Flapjack.
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in case chiropractor don't work, you can be a line cook.
Really quick, we like to thank the city also for everything for doing that. We were out there in that monsoon, but we got it done. Staff was great. I really want to tell Gus, there was a time when they were putting the awnings out, and it was gathering water, and then all of a sudden, it all fell. And Peg went up to, Gus didn't say, up to Hiro when he came up, "We have a problem." And Hiro responded, "There's no problems, only solutions." And that right there, city staff 100%. I shared that with them. It was just really great. Everybody came out. Mayor, thank you for coming out, Annette, everybody. Bill, Joe Angel, and just checking on us out there if we weren't sick or falling apart. And again, to, yeah, no, or falling down. But Carrie, thank you. She was really ill, and she came out and helped. And to our pancake flipper, Mr. Zamora, couldn't have done it without you. And Blake Carter, who is not here today, but that guy has mastering down of pancake flapjacks to the T. So, we like that. And I'd like to also acknowledge Gabriel Jimenez, who helped us, but since he was a part of the Majestics aspect, he had to stay inside. But this was a community event. People came out that helped. Sister Cities were a small number, but we had the volunteers, and that's what did it. And thank you again, city staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again to all of our organizations. I believe Mr. Ernie Lopez has just a couple of words to say.
Again, I'd just like to thank everybody from the city here also, like I call him T-Bird, but he told us, you know, everything he said, we all want to thank everybody here. But we also just want to give a little history real quick. You know, the Majestics started in 1963, and they did all this for the city. They did toy drives, they did Easter baskets, and they did that. And our car club, we started in 1973, which I'm an original from '73. So, our deal for the city and letting know Santa Fe Springs, we're going to be doing the same thing. You need us, we're going to do the Easter baskets, the toy drives, whatever charity we can do, we're going to follow that trend from the guys in 1963. So, I'd just like to thank you, and anytime you need the club in here, for all, especially our club, we're here for you. Thank you.
I don't know where that started in 63.
Well, that's, like he says, Majestics started in 1963 here in Santa Fe Springs. All the original, all the original members were all, you know, we, right now in our club right now, we have about five members from 1963. And Michael Braw, the original founder, is in our chapter. So, he was all from Santa Fe Springs. When I started with the club in 1973, 90% of my members were all from Santa Fe Springs. So, we represent a lot of Santa Fe Springs plus other cities. But our goal is always to do for the city that helps us. We're here to help them. Thank you.
Something really quick, and I forgot to say, thank you to Arthur. Where is he at? Arthur's only 15 years old. He supports me in every car show that I go to, selling tickets, just setting up and taking down. And my mother, Chacha, over there, a big supporter, and David and his wife that are here, too. So, and my friend Armando, thank you guys for supporting. And Arthur, he is experiencing knowing how to give back, how to work with other people, him and his brother David. So, thank you for being a part and helping me all the time.
Thank you, everybody, again. Thank you.
You want to say something? Anything? I'm going to say something. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all of you guys. You guys, you know, without the leadership of Renee to help staff and, you know, truth be told, we were talking to Gus, and he was talking about, you know, moving it over to the gym, and we knew it wasn't going to be as big as it would be if it was at Heritage Park with the egg hunt and stuff like that. And, you know, I've told him, you know, Gus, if you're going to go crazy, maybe we should just postpone it because we don't want to let people down. And he said, "No, we're going to, we're going to do it the best we can." And when we talked to A.J., and you guys, many people might not know, they were going to have a car show right next to Heritage Park at the same time. And they wanted to continue to make sure that they still were able to give these kids the baskets, and it worked out perfect because Renee had told Gus to make it work and to work with you guys and to make sure that you guys were involved. And to be honest, you guys were the hit of the whole, the whole thing. Not to take, nothing away from what our staff and everybody have done, but you guys... but you guys were a big part of it. And I think kids were really happy with the baskets, and I thank each and every one of you guys. Sister City, you know, Ernie, Gabriel, Johnny, you guys, you know, your community members and your residents that live in our city that are helping again. And, you know, without the leadership of what Renee brings, I don't think a lot of people would buy into it like the way it went away for a long time. And I think it's back. And I think you guys have opened the doors to really show what you guys can do as a car club and a community member and really help our community where it doesn't put all the burden on us. And that's a huge thing. We talk about volunteers. We talk about doing things as a group. And you guys have really stepped up and shown class of what you guys do, and I thank you guys for that from the bottom of my heart. Because my kids were very happy with the basket they got and the candy. Well, not so much candy for me, but I thank you guys for everything you guys did. And it's, hopefully, it's a great future relationship that we can build on and make bigger and better things happen even more. So thank you, guys. Thank everybody for what you guys have done for this Easter extravaganza because it looked like a lot of cities just gave up and said, "Forget it. They don't want to do it." And that's not in Gus's and Renee's vocabulary to quit. So, you know, Gus, thank you very much, sir, because you showed true leadership, and your staff followed that leadership. And I just thank you for everything you do. And Mr. Obadia, it's a short time here, but you've done some great things so far, and I appreciate everything you do for us. So thank you. Next, proclaiming April 26, 2024, as National Arbor Day. I would like to call upon Ground Supervisor Eric Bor... Borunda? Burunda, my bad. My bad, Eric, to accept the proclamation. Come on, Johnny. Don't be shy.
Wait, take a picture.
In the middle, in the middle.
Scoot over. You're too tall. That's not real wood. That's not a tree. No, that's plastic. Not a tree.
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, changes to the agenda. Mr. Obadia, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Public comments. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You have an opportunity to speak for three minutes. Once Deputy City Clerk announces your name. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
We have no speakers, Mayor.
I would like to now close public comments and move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind taking a consent out of order before we do our public hearings?
Yeah. The motion for consent? Can I get a motion?
Um, a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so ordered.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Next item, staff communication. Mr. Obadia, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to call on our Director of Community Services, Isela Valdés.
Thank you, Renee. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and audience. I have two items to share with you this evening. Our annual art fest and preview and showcase events will be held next Thursday and Friday, April 25th and the 26th. On Thursday, the 25th, the preview show will be from 5:00 to 9:00. And on Friday, it'll be April the 26th from 3:00 to 11:00. And we have a new location at Heritage Park this year. So the event's going to feature art exhibits from a variety of genres, live entertainment, including music and dance, food and beverages, artists and vendors, and a lot more. We're going to have a paint and sip workshop that will also be held on April the 25th for $35 per person. The entry fees is $10 per adult or $18 for a two-day pass. Students are free with a valid ID, and seniors are $8 per day. And then at this event, we're also adding a cosplay area, highlighting the Native American exhibit with the participation of the Gaberlino Tonga, San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians on Friday evening. And there will also be an art con, a comic book art section. And then the featured bands this year is going to be The Wise Guys, The Cash It Out, which is a Johnny Cash tribute band, and Bruno and the Hooligans, which is a Bruno Mars band. And those will be on Friday evening. So we hope to see everybody there next week to support our art fest for the community. And then my last report is that our city honored its volunteers last week on Wednesday, April the 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Annual Volunteer Recognition Dinner. We had over 112 volunteers and their family members that attended to be recognized for their exemplary service to the city and to our community. So as we celebrate Volunteer National Week, which is next week, the 21st to the 27th, we're reminded that of the more than 116 long-term Santa Fe Spring volunteers that committed over 5,000 hours of community service each year to our city. So we're honored to have such strong volunteer base who continually foster and they display their pride to our community and a dedication to those that they serve. So thank you very much to all our volunteers, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Isela. Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to call on our Fire Chief, Chad Van Meteren.
Thank you, Mr. Obadia. Mr. Mayor, City Council, members of the audience, just wanted to let everybody know that on April 27th, this is a day after the art fest. We'll be having a pancake breakfast at our Station 4, right here next to City Hall. We just want to invite everybody out. It's going to be a great event, come and have pancakes with the firefighters. This is a 100% free event that you can come out and eat. And if you choose, you can make a donation to the Santa Fe Springs Fire Foundation, which gives back to the kids and the community as we sponsor them through the academy and paramedic school. So we hope to see you all out there. Thank you.
Nice. That's it. Next, public hearing, item number five.
Mayor, before you, item number five is a public hearing regarding our building ordinances, our building codes. This is a change to Title 24. You heard this first reading and before you, it's the second reading. And staff's available for any questions.
So, public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to be heard, please approach the podium and state your name. Deputy City Clerk, do you have any speakers?
No speakers, Mayor.
I would like to close public hearing. Is there any discussion or motion for approval of item number five?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so ordered. Another public hearing, item number six. I would like to call upon Mr. Obadia.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is a resolution for adoption of fees for billing and safety plan check fees. Just a matter of background, these fees were adopted in 2016. We have seen no increases for the last eight years. This will follow a CPI increase every year. So before you, to get us back in line with the market and get our fees to where they should be.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to be heard, please approach the podium and state your name. Deputy City Clerk, anyone wishing to speak?
No speakers, Mayor.
I'd like to close public hearing. Could I get a motion? Any discussion? No? Is, can I get a motion? And a second?
I'll move.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so ordered. Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successors, Successor Agency, and City Council Consent Calendar. We have a total of 12 consent items. Do we?
Yeah, we're good, Mayor.
That's the first one, yeah. For Joe Angel. Sorry, see, you messed me up.
Sorry, Mayor.
Next, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Martin, nope. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Nope.
Councilmember Zamora, nope. Mayor Protem Rounds, nope. And I have none. Council comments. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and I just wanted to thank everybody. They're all gone. Not everybody's gone, but a lot of people are gone. But we had a great turnout at the Easter event. It was so nice. The family loved it. We didn't know what to expect when we got there because of the rain, but the Majestics, the Undesirables, Gus and the staff, all of their staff did a wonderful job. Sister City, the pancakes, it was just so much fun. And everybody just pulled together. And I can't even say we made the best of it because it was the best. It was really fun. I haven't seen that many people. I think some other cities came to our event too because theirs was canceled. But it was a great job. And I wanted to, is that Marion Herrera? Hi, we haven't seen her for a while, but I'm so happy to see you right there. Want to say hi to you after the meeting. I also wanted to say thank you to A.J. for getting me in touch with somebody that's going to donate to Siaka. And Chacha, thank you so much. I'm the liaison to Siaka, and I took a tour with Denise, the executive director, and all the animals there, the cats, and just all of the pets, our fur friends. It just breaks my heart to see them in there. They're so beautiful, all of them. They even have an incubator for puppies that people left on the door, by the door, so that, you know, they don't know what to do with them. It hurts me because I know what could happen to them if no one adopts them. We already know what happens to them. So I encourage anybody that doesn't have a pet and thinks that they could handle a pet to go to Siaka and adopt one of the fur babies because they really need your love and attention. I saw a lot of huskies, and I have a husky. And when I go home and feed him at night, I am just so happy that my little husky isn't in there. But I know that there's a lot of them. So please, tell everybody that you know, get yourself a little pet. They're very friendly and they're so loyal to you. They'll do, they'll do more than sometimes what your husband or your kids will do for you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, Chacha? You have to go to the podium. Chacha gave me a contact that is going to donate up to $5,000 to adopt a pet and volunteerism. People are going to go to volunteer to clean up after the pets. It was very, very inspirational, but it had to do with A.J. calling me.
Yeah, I'm Deborah Cabra. I'm A.J.'s mom. But I just wanted to let you know that I think they are willing to have a, like, where you bring the pets over there, where they can have an expo or something, where some people can adopt the pets. If you can get in touch with them. He just got back. He was ill. Monkey was out. So I just thought I'd let you know that. But hopefully, that'll work out for you. And I just wanted to say thank you for opening that door, that you can both work together. And that'll help Siaka because both of my dogs are from there. All my dogs that I've get, and I get from there because it is a high-kill shelter. And I do hope that they do help out, and it helps you, the city, as far as being a liaison to them for Siaka and help those poor animals. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, A.J. Thank you, Chacha, for that. And also, I wanted to thank our librarian, Deborah. We had an event last Friday. Wasn't expecting, I just didn't know what to expect, but it was native dancing? Oops. Native hoops. And it was very, very nice. And they had a full house there, and I brought my grandson and my husband. I tell you, go there to the library, and it's fun for the whole family. And the staff did a very awesome job, and I just loved the show. Thank you for that. And just have a nice evening, and I'll talk to you later. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see everyone tonight. Again, as you can see, the city never amazes me. I mean, I'm very proud to be representing the residents of Santa Fe Springs, being a longtime resident of Santa Fe Springs. The city's always been good to me, and that's one reason I wanted to be on this council was to give back to the community. But, you know, just seeing everybody in the audience, the volunteers, the Majestics. And the Majestics, that was actually a reunion for me because there were several members that were there from '63 that were my friends that I haven't seen in years. So that was very, very nice to see them. But it was a few years ago, sir. But again, you know, thank you to our staff. You know, it stops at the, starts at the top with our city manager Renee, and it dwindles down to all of our staff, our residents, our volunteers. And just thank you, everyone, for everything you do for our community. That's what makes Santa Fe Springs, Santa Fe Springs. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. First, I want to say, you know, we were talking about the Majestics, but we forgot to talk about the Undesirables and A.J. And I want to say, if people don't know, he was the one that headed this whole idea and doing things. And I commend you because, you know, well, and Hollywood. I just want to commend you both because you guys have a vision, and you completed that vision, you know, successfully. And I want to thank you guys for what you guys have done. Arthur and, what, are you Arthur? Arthur? Art? And?
Armando.
Armando, thank you, guys, for helping. You know, at 15 years old and really giving your best to a community. Do you live in the city? Where do you live? In Woody? Well, I thank you for helping us. So thank you, guys. And this has been a whole week of volunteering, you know, from Thursday? The recognition of volunteers to Sister City, the Women's Club. Everybody seems to be really blossoming and coming out and giving back to the communities. And I thank all of you guys for all your dedication and help for the community. And it really shows right now. And it really helps with, you know, great leadership, you know, from the top all the way to the bottom. And it just, right now is a great time for our community and for our city. So I just want to thank each and every person here and that has helped us become who we are. So thank you, guys. And let's have a good night, and don't forget the art fest next Friday? Thursday and Friday. So you guys, make sure you come out and have a good time. And let's see you guys next Thursday and Friday. Media adjourned.